Correct, yeah. So if you go the address, the second one is 958 East High Street, which is our address here. And the other one is 540 North Bryan Street, which I think is considered the football field. So. Yep. One of the things about this insurance too is our total value is, let's just say, is like $50 million. If this building gets wiped out, it only shows 41 million. But if this is the only thing that would be wiped out, we'd have all up to that 50-plus million for this facility. So that's how the insurance are. If you get one of these other buildings, let's say one of these concession stands, something happened with that, it shows 47 to 69. They would go up higher than that to replace it because of the overall value that's listed here. So I think that's a very valuable character to this coverage. So if there's, if there is some inflation that's not in here, or if something moves like that, we still typically will be covered for replacement value. Also on any buses that are 10 years or less, they would insure replacement on those. Older buses would be just what they were valued. So if we had an 11-year bus and it was valued at $4,000, that's all you're getting. But if it's 10-year bus valued at $6,000, but takes 140 to replace it, we'd get to 140.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yes, you're welcome. If there's any other questions? Okay.
And as always, we have wonderful donations, particularly for cheerleading. They're getting ready to do their first annual cheerleading competition here at the school in August. That'll be interesting. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Moving on to employment of certified staff. I do need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jen. Recommend to approve the resignation from Lucas Smith as classroom instructor at the conclusion of the 23-24 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract pending certification and background check to Jordan Wells as classroom instructor with zero years' experience at a bachelor's degree for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve Emily Fenzer as summer tutor on an as-needed basis at a rate of $31.55 per hour. Recommend to approve Jamie Altman and Jennifer Bennett to place QR codes in elementary library books for a maximum of 15 hours each at $31.55 per hour. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2024-2025 school year. Sean Bergman, co-head junior high girls basketball coach. Sean Bergman, co-assistant junior high girls basketball coach. Dave Blue, assistant boys basketball coach. Dave Blue, head girls track coach. Dave Blue, mini-aces girls track coach. A.J. Clausing, head junior high boys basketball coach. Michael Myers, mini-aces cross-country coach. Michael Myers, freshman boys basketball coach. Paul Payne, head boys track coach. Paul Payne, mini-aces boys track coach. Ally Sturie, co-assistant girls basketball coach. Kelly Van Horn, head junior high cross-country coach. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2024-2025 school year. Kate Haggerty for junior high volleyball. Recommend to approve Gail Countryman as a certified substitute for the 24-25 school year. Any discussion?
Will miss Lucas?
Will miss Lucas.
He accepted a position as a principal at Petronas. So we wish him the best, that he's gonna be missed, for sure. Jordan Wells, just so you know, is the new replacement. Yeah, Bertomey. And I think you know everyone else.
Could you tell us more about the QR codes? I think that's a really neat thing.
Yeah. The QR codes for the library are barcodes that we want to put in the books so that a kid can scan that with their iPad and it'll actually read it to them. So it's real beneficial for like our ELL students who don't speak English very well. It's also real beneficial for like someone that's reading at a lower grade level, that they can select a book at their age level and it'll read it to them and then, you know, helps with their confidence, number one, and with their peers, you know.
And along through their reading.
And through their reading, yes. So, yeah. Now, there is potentially something else. We might be doing that Mrs. Kaufman just told me about today. I don't know if you want to mention that or not, or not at this point, or if you want to wait, but.
We just have a Zoom conference with a company called Learning Ally, and I guess they have thousands of books already downloaded. I just don't know the cost.
So we want to get that information before they start putting these barcodes on because that might be, have more options as far as the number of books available and cost-effective. It might be just as beneficial to use that, and it's already done, so.
And something similar where it's reading to them.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. I need a motion for the next part.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Galen. Thank you, Jen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2024-2025 school year for Tim Schock, head baseball coach. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Epstein. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. We have an addendum also for certified staff. So I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jen. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract pending background check to Zachary Yoder as classroom instructor with three years' experience at a bachelor's degree for the 24-25 school year. Discussion?
That, he's taking Mr. Smith's position.
You had the other person a little bit ago. Jordan is ELA.
Right.
Okay.
Lucas was strength and conditioning.
I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0.
Sorry.
Moving on to the employment of classified staff. I need a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Galen. Recommend to approve Pam Slattery to scan student records during the summer of 2024 for a maximum of 56 hours at her current hourly rate. Recommend to approve a one-year limited contract pending certification and background check to Courtney Rittenhouse as playground aide with zero years' experience for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the resignation from Brody Langham as co-assistant football special teams coordinator-coach. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts pending certification for the 24-25 school year. John Adams, co-head softball coach. Jay Chamberlain, co-head softball coach. Ian DeWitt, assistant high school wrestling coach. James Egley, head junior high wrestling coach. Austin Freed, assistant junior high wrestling coach. Mary Glass, co-assistant junior high volleyball coach. John Haggerty, co-head junior high girls basketball coach. John Haggerty also as co-assistant junior high girls basketball coach and mini-aces girls basketball coach. Courtney Handy as head junior high volleyball coach. Kendra Paskett as co-sophomore class advisor. Tristan Scranton as assistant high school wrestling coach. Todd Schock as co-assistant football special teams coordinator-coach. Jeff Sleisman as assistant junior high boys basketball coach. Eddie Tunis as head junior high football coach. Travion Tunis as assistant junior high football coach. Jasmine Walters as co-assistant junior high volleyball coach. And Bob Weatherhead as co-assistant girls basketball coach.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Moving on to services and agreements. Motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training and Rehabilitation Center from July 1st, '24 through June 30th of 2025. Amount of services, $80 per student per weekday for students assigned to that facility. For students on IEPs, the school will be invoiced per the ODE, Special Education Rate. Recommend to approve the 2024-2025 Coalition VHO dues with Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding as presented. Recommend to approve a three-year sports medicine and promotional agreement with Parkview Health System, Inc., DVA Parkview Sports Medicine, beginning with the 24-25 school year. The school agrees to pay $15,000 in year one, $17,500 in year two, and $35,000 in year three. Recommend to approve fiscal year '25 Milwaukee membership fees with Northern Bookai Education Council. Discussion?
Why does the sports medicine jump from 15 to 35,000 every year?
I agree. Well, to ease that in, in the past, Community Memorial provide, John Haggerty was our athletic director and the cost was.
Trainer.
Trainer, sorry. And the cost was a lower amount. We don't have that anymore. And Parkview Health is, who's been working with Mr. Haught and the admin team in regards to replacing Mr. Haggerty. And that is the wages that was agreed upon. It's going to be 35,000 every year after the third year.
They were, Parkview was actually wanting about 35,000 to begin with. But because we had been paying a lower rate, they worked with us, compromised, and so started that with that 15, then a slight bump up in year two, then of course, year three is a large bump. But that gives us at least a little bit to prepare and work our way to that point instead of hitting it right away.
It's a lot, a big position, a lot of hours.
And very important, I think. There are some schools that don't have.
They have to hire their own.
They have to hire their own person.
Which would be a lot more than 35,000.
My only comment, I really love us. Our sports people don't take advantage of everything that's in that contract because there was quite a bit there that they're offering for that, which is good for us. A lot there, actually.
Just so people read their contracts?
Yeah. Well, no, just making sure that we take full advantage of everything we're paying for.
Yeah. Well, some of those, I don't recall off the top of my head, but what were some of the things that they are offering?
First training.
Special training in various areas that, yeah, so really.
With each coach, with each sport, with, I mean, there was quite a bit there that they would do group training with.
So if we utilize it, then it's going to be worth it.
Yep.
Worth the cost.
Yeah.
Well, that person goes to all.
All games, all everything.
All varsity, high school, a lot of practices. It's, if it's a 35,000, it's a good deal.
It's about half of what a trainer would cost. I mean, less than half of what it would cost us to do it on a smartphone.
Not to mention, we don't give up.
Pardon me?
Not to mention, we don't give up.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please, Mike.
Okay. We'll be here in a second. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. We do have an addendum about Dunbar Mechanical under services and agreements. So I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you, Galen. Recommend entering into an agreement with Dunbar Mechanical, Inc. for the installation of three heat pumps at a cost of $29,750. Discussion?
Just needed to add that on as an addendum because that's above what I'm supposed to be able to approve. And we need to get that taken care of.
I wanted to add too that Eric had, he had spoken to five, six, seven different vendors to get quotes, see what they're offering, see if they had the product and the service and so forth. So as you know, in the past, he is very diligent about looking for the best deal. And this is the one that he proposed to us to put in front of you. So.
There's like a, what did he say, like a, how many week lead times that we needed to get it approved?
Yeah, maybe.
Six to eight weeks?
Six to eight weeks. And this here will probably end up taking these monies out of the money that was set aside for our LFI, the heat pumps. So that's not been touched, nothing has been taken out of those funds, I don't think, ever.
Only three, I mean.
Yeah, $10,000 apiece.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Moving on to other business, remembering that the third bullet point has been tabled. I need a motion.
I move.
I'll second.
Recommend to approve the following student fees for the 24-25 school year. Preschool, $50, grades K through 12, $60. Recommend to approve laptop protection plan in the amount of $50. Recommend to approve the junior high and high school athletic handbook for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the athletic ticket prices for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the elementary school student handbook for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the high school and middle school student handbook for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the elementary school staff handbook for the 24-25 school year. And recommend to approve the high school and middle school faculty handbook for the 24-25 school year. Discussion?
So are we going to discuss ticket prices for students? And are we, I know at our leadership meeting, we talked a great deal about ticket prices.
I mean, we're kind of locked into what the conference does.
Right.
So, I mean, but you're talking maybe the extra?
Yes.
Extra help? What do you, I mean, I think we talked about maybe asking.
If there were sponsors.
If there were any sponsors to help do this, right?
Right. Was there to just transfer funds from the general fund over to cover ticket prices? Talked about reducing, you know, paying a portion of them.
And thoughts here? I think from you two, it would be nice to hear about, about this because the prices aren't going to go down.
Well, like you said, locked in with the act of the conference. Ticket prices, I believe, are going to be approved for.
The passes.
The passes.
Oh, these are for the passes.
Yeah. Everything was there.
I thought it was $7 per student. Yeah. Yeah, I think. Trying to find it.
We did, we did just.
We did look and we did reuse the ticket prices, like, you know, the passes.
Oh, good. Okay.
Which, you know, I did a little more research. We weren't necessarily, we're the highest in some areas, but, so this is more in line, actually it's cheaper in some areas. So they vary a lot from school to school on what the pass prices are.
Is that from school to school within the GMC, or is that?
The GMC, well, GMC only sets the ticket gate prices. That's the only thing, you know, $7 to go to a football game. The passes, we set.
Okay.
So currently, varsity football, K through adult is seven. Varsity volleyball is seven. Boys basketball is seven. Girls basketball is seven. Wrestling is seven. And all junior high and freshman, you know, JV events are four.
That's, that's the like policy. We, yes.
Yeah, so.
And that's at the gate.
Just to clarify for everyone, we'd had a discussion with the leadership team that Lucas had worked with, the student leaders. And they are trying to think of ways to encourage students to come to events. And so this was something that we had discussed was trying to figure out how to make ticket prices a little less for students, so.
So how does that work with passes? Does a portion of that go to the GMC?
No, we keep all, all the gate money comes to us unless it's a GMC term.
They just, they just set what the price is so that schools don't have $7 at Antwerp, $6 at Paulding, $9, you know. So they just set what, a uniform price.
So people know what to expect within the conference.
Okay.
It's an agreement in the conference itself. And we tend to look at cost for officials and things. The last time we raised it, it went from six to seven. It was because our officials.
Officials.
Right, last time we talked, they were like around $100 for the basketball.
Well, I think they're 80, 80 per official.
Okay.
Now in football, they just go, the state approved going to six officials. So now we went to six times 80, $480 for every home football game. That's the officials' cost.
And I look for next year too, though, it's going to go up quite a bit too because of lack of officials.
Yeah.
The old supply and demand thing going on here.
I'll also add, Mr. Haught was, was working on this for quite a while, pouring over it, trying to figure out what the most appropriate price was for the passes. The student price is lowered significantly. If you look, $50 for all season, but fall would be 20, and then winter would be 40. So essentially, like, student could pay 20 bucks and get in every football game. So that's a pretty big savings for kids.
And volleyball.
Yeah, football, volleyball. So I think that's a step in the right direction, at least. Being cognizant of trying to get kids there and make it more affordable for them.
I mean, we've, we've had people sponsor.
Games.
Games in the past. Truthfully, I, we don't necessarily always see an increase even when that's done. So if your, if your goal is to get more students there, I'm not sure if that accomplishes it.
Well, perhaps that's the way it was marketed as well, you know? Maybe the word didn't get out.
Well, it might be, yes.
And bouncing off of that, making sure that the kids in the school know that the prices have gone down, and the parents, of course. Because I think that's, that's an important part of this.
Could get with Aaron on that, publish that out through our website. Would be a good place to do that.
Yeah, and you.
And maybe, maybe when you publish it, say, this is what you're saving by doing it. Spell that out because not everybody's going to.
And we've talked about that, especially for the students. Like, it just hasn't been a thing for students to bypass this year, I don't think, for a while. We haven't sold many, but.
Right, I mean, if we do something at the open house, let them know that, you know, fall sports passes will be available at open house. Maybe that'll be something.
We, we've done some things like that to pass. We used to have pre-sale, we did away with that. Kids did not buy it. I mean, this is not a Hicksville thing, it's throughout the conference. Kids wouldn't buy pre-sale, we'd take them down to lunch, we'd do whatever. And kids, kids aren't buying them, weren't buying them, so.
Well, that's a lot for a kid to let go of in one crack. Right, and that's an expensive time of year, too.
But the pre-sale would be for each individual game. So let's say, instead of, back when it was $6, we would have, students' pre-sale would be $4.
Right. Like you said, market it to the parents. You gotta, because the parents would see the value and the kids aren't going to see the value. So there's a way to market to the parents, like the open house or.
That, and then our brochure probably, you know, through Aaron Montgomery is going to be our best bet because there's no newspaper anymore to advertise that kind of stuff. So we can get it out on our social media and send it out often to keep that out in front of people. That would be the, that's why.
Like he said, it's going to be hard to. I just have to believe there's some more creative ways out there than just saying, oh, but that's the way it is. It's what we do.
Right.
Well, those passes per events are, if you, if you look at it, if you got volleyball and football, you pay whatever. Each game, potentially, they're getting in for almost pennies on a dollar.
Yeah, five home games, we have 11, I believe, home volleyball games.
And just going to three of them pays for it.
Could you sell them at the gate?
Passes?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, you do?
Okay.
Usually at the beginning of the seasons.
Any other, thanks for bringing that up, Jen. Any other discussion on that? Okay, can I roll call?
Wait, hold on. So I want to go back to the tabled handbook. I would like to recommend we put a portion of our policy into it. The coaches' policy.
I really, I really like that suggestion because that gives us a way to tie the two together and hold the coaches accountable, so.
So my thought was to take the policy as it reads under sportsmanship policy and take that portion that is specific to the coaches and insert that into our handbook, so it's there every year.
I did that earlier today.
Oh, so you already did that, Jen?
I did that.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
You, it's not your turn yet, but we'll.
It's coming.
It's coming. It's at the end. Because you guys did not announce that you were coming, so you come at the end.
I'll leave it at that.
So roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Do we have any old business to discuss? Any general discussion? So now, unannounced guest wishing to address the board. I'm assuming you won't talk long, but if you do, there is a time limit that we are allowed to put on you. So I'm not quite sure, there's the.
Three minutes?
Three minutes. It's three minutes per person if it starts to get long. So I'll just kind of start a timer if it starts to get a little long. Okay? How many of you are planning on speaking?
Then we'll, then we'll try and hold you for it. Go ahead.
All right.
Just make sure to please push the button on mic frequency and try to get the.
Yeah, I think it's green. Yeah, it's green.
Good?
Okay. Introduce yourself and then go into what you want to.
My name's Holly Johnston, a parent of Mackenzie Enderling. She's going to be a senior this year. Came tonight to address some concerns with the softball program. A lot of parents watching the game would agree. However, none were raven enough to come. So I'm doing this on behalf of everybody. Felt like my daughter was treated a little unfairly this year, and not just my daughter, but others. She was chosen to sit varsity and she worked hard to get there. She had issues last year and she talked to the coaches at the end of the year, asked what she could do differently so that she could have a chance to play on varsity. And they suggested, you know, she needed to improve her game, she needed to come to open cages, and she did that. And they congratulated her this year at the improvement she had made and told her that she had earned a spot on the varsity team. And she sat almost the entire season. She pinch-hit once, played the field for one inning, and batted one time. And so we got to tournament week and a group text was sent out saying that these girls should report this week. And my daughter and one other girl on the team, Emma Scouten, were not included in that list, and that went out to all the players. went out to all the players, so John and Jay have a rule that you cannot confront them about anything for twenty-four hours after it happens, so we waited our twenty-four hours, and Mackenzie decided she wanted to text the coaches to get an explanation, ask why, and so she sent a text message to the coaches, and it was never responded to, she was just left hanging. Throughout the season, there was a lot of the same girls playing all the time, the girls were not rotated, a lot of parents feel like it's daddy ball, for lack of a better word to call it, so I guess for the girls that do love the game and want to play the game, you know, we would like to see as parents some improvement to the program because they're not getting a chance to play the game that they all love, and I have a copy of the text message, I can read it, or you guys can look at it, you know, however, if that's important, if not, that's fine, too.
If you cannot, are we getting one of the next persons?
Sure, there's a little bit on the back, too.
My name's Rhonda Carrier, and none of these children that play on the softball team are my relation, I come and support the team because I have wonderful friends that have children that play, and I'm here mainly to support, I grew up in Hicksville, I don't live here anymore, but I find these kids very special, and I drive an hour just to Hicksville, and then if it's further, you know, I drive even further, and so it was really disappointing this year to drive that far and see girls sit the bench, where they would have awful games, where in every sport that I've ever known them, that's a team, that when your, when your starters aren't playing well, most of you that have coached or know the games, those starters usually are pulled from the game, and those sitting on the bench usually go in, it's, it happened to all of us, mainly if we played sports, you weren't playing good, get your bud in here and sit down, and we teach you a lesson, and then those younger girls got to play, but this year that didn't happen, didn't happen at all, and I was disappointed in you, John, I really was, sorry I'm addressing you, but I adored this guy and stood up for this guy two years ago, when these parents were afraid that their kids were going to get ignored and looked over, and I stood up for them and said, John's a good guy, he won't do that to those girls, and I was wrong, and that breaks my heart for those girls, breaks my heart for those girls, and even the way some of the things were handled this year were not well, they're needed, I liked that you said that there should be some coaches' conduct, because we needed that this year for softball, because coaches' conduct was bad when it came to softball, and I want to support the program, and I want to support John, he's got kids here, he's got daughters that are going to play, and I don't dislike the guy, I think he's a wonderful guy, but I don't think he coached to his potential, definitely think Jay did not coach to his potential at all, there were situations where one child was pretty much embarrassed in front of the whole team, and, and then was kind of attacked when other girls should have been disciplined, too, she was the only one that was disciplined, there was coaches' behavior that he had rules, for them, for us as parents, I don't understand, well, I wasn't a parent, but these as parents, why these parents had to abide by that twenty-four hours, but he didn't, that was just, there needs to be a more, these parents need to know what they can do, because these parents sat there and were scared, they were scared to come forward, and that's sad that we can't stand up, these parents can't stand up for their children because they're afraid of the consequences, so.
That's your.
Thank you.
Jamie Scoudon, my daughter Emma plays softball, I just had a bunch of mouthwork done, so you might, I might, you might not be able to understand me, I, too, am very disappointed in the way the softball program was, ran this year, my daughter, amongst lots of other girls in her age group, her grade, were left out, have been left out for the last two years, to build what the class below her calls the elite team, they, they rub it in these girls' faces, we knew who was on the team before John ever announced the team the first year, because it got leaked by, I don't know, who, there's been nasty text messages from these younger classmen, I don't feel, like, yeah, some of these girls play really well, I was varsity softball coach, I, I know the, the potential of these girls, I coached several of these girls for years and years, they had the potential to play over at least four, four of the girls he had on his team, in my opinion, either way, a softball program, any sports program, it should be the underclassmen are learning, right, they're, they're learning, they're given the time to get better, the juniors, seniors, the upperclassmen should be, you know, they should be playing, they should be getting their time, their years are almost over, let them enjoy the sport, that did not happen, that did not happen last year, the complaints were many, many, many this year, unfortunately, I do have about seven text messages from parents on my phone that did not want repercussions to their daughters from this meeting, so chose not to come, I don't know whose idea what this was, I was just going to let it go, unfortunately, my daughter, who's played since she was four years old, has decided she will not play as a senior this year, which breaks my heart, she has never not played softball, the only way she will play softball for Hicksville as a senior is if John is not her coach, she likes John as a person, she does not like John as a coach, and she has meant, spent lots of time crying, her heart has been broken for the last two years, I don't know if John does not realize what he's done to these children, but he's really broke them down, and it's sad, it's, it's sad to see, and I know of at least ten girls that this has happened to, some of the teachers, even, that go to school here, their children have experienced the same things, their children have talked to me, so I know they've talked to their parents, this is just not acceptable, we need to do better, Hicksville, we need to do better.
Good evening, Board, my name is Scott Bland, I am here separately, but on the same subject as what's going on, I am here as a thirteen-year coach, former founding member of the Hicksville Girls' Softball Association, and a concerned citizen now. What these moms and spectators brought up is an age-old problem, so many complaints, only the brave ones show up to meetings, because of, they're afraid of the big red X on their child, when I was part of the board for the Hicksville Girls' Softball Association, not only was there a code of conduct for the children, but also there was a code of conduct made for the coaches, and so my concern, or my thought process, or my inquisitive of the reason why I showed up, is I wanted to see if there's any regulations for a coach, and if there is, why aren't they being upheld, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Scott. So, at this point, I will tell you thank you very much for coming, I guess we know how hard it is to come in and say things, but if you believe in something, you stood up for it, we have heard you, we will discuss this issue, but not right now in the session. Do you have any further questions, Scott, yes, there, there, we do have a code of conduct for coaches, you probably heard that a little earlier, but if you have any further questions for us, or about Call of Duty, let us know.
May I add, is that on the website? Is it on a school website?
The coaches handbook?
Yeah.
The coaches handbook.
I don't, I still don't know. Or the policy that.
Policies, the policy is, you just have to go through.
That is approved, you go to the website, and you go to the policies, and look under coaches, and that policy that is now included in that handbook is in there.
Does it say the steps we should take as parents?
No, it, it addresses coaches' responsibilities.
So if parents have concerns, or if they're, what should they do, does it?
What you're doing right now.
Okay, but this should be the first step?
No, the first step is always for the coach, but from our understanding, as you guys have already done.
Yes, there are a lot of parents that have it because of scared of repercussions of what might happen to their child, and I, as, I don't think you realize, if you heard what Holly said, that there were two girls that sat the bench all season, and there was no explanation to these girls, but they were said, bye-bye, glad you sat the bench, we got a week left, you're no longer on the team, never heard of that in my life before, those girls should be actually the MVPs of the season because they tolerated that, weren't nasty, put up with that, even took punishment they shouldn't have had to take, and then.
Asked for an explanation and didn't get one.
Yeah, asked why, and then they're totally ignored, it's, it's just beyond me, it was why this even got turned over.
I will say that there's people in this room that are acutely aware of this problem.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. We will not be going into executive session tonight, we are going to be conducting a facilities tour before we adjourn, our next meeting will be July fifteenth, we do have to hire, rehire Keith and Mrs. Kreitz, and so we will adjourn after that, so.
With no further business.
With no further business being taken care of, so you all are excused while we go out in the lovely weather to see everything, okay? Thanks again.